Item 10C, receive report and provide direction to staff regarding consideration of a resolution repealing Resolution 1986-64. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was hoping to speak on that last item.
Please go right ahead.
I'm Diana Reddy, I'm a community builder with Housing Leadership Council and I'm personally a resident of Redwood City, but I have been talking with San Bruno residents and business owners about housing issues and I just wanted to pass on some of those conversations to you. First of all, San Bruno really stands up and the housing community thanks you for that. And staff did an amazing job with this, with the housing element and coming up with proposals for, because of the loss of redevelopment and other things, we, all of our cities are really having a tough time. And so, I really commend your staff for coming up with these innovative ideas with, or replacing some of those, those things that we've lost. And also, congratulations on your Measure N and, and other opportunities to create density and, and your economic development here in San Bruno. Just one caution, that economic development and adding more development in the downtown may cause displacement. You have many of your, currently low-income housing is in the downtown area and some of our cities have been experiencing displacement already. My own daughter-in-law is a teacher at your Rollingwood. She just moved to Rollingwood this last year and I have to always look it up. She's at Rollingwood and she was upset this last summer because several of her families were being displaced and she was losing some of her favorite students. And the adding of affordable housing doesn't really protect our low-income families from those skyrocketing rents that they're already experiencing. And I just wanted to let you know that those of us in the housing community in San Mateo County are talking with the county and cities about protections for renters. And many of our renters are reporting to us that they're paying $2,000 and more for apartments that are barely meeting health and safety standards. And we need to do something about that to protect them. And so, I just wanted to let you know, it's not in your housing element to do that, but the state not only expects us as jurisdictions to provide affordable housing, but to protect the naturally affordable housing that already exists. And in many of our cities, our developments were built in the 60s and 70s and they don't truly warrant a rent of $2,000. So, I'm hoping that we can come back to you in the next couple of months to talk about things that we might do to protect renters from these skyrocketing rents. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10C, receive report and provide direction to staff regarding consideration of a resolution repealing Resolution 1986-64 and directing implementation of a modified policy for inspection, maintenance, and replacement of private sewer laterals.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. Jim Birch, Deputy Director of Maintenance and Operations and sharing this presentation tonight with me is Dennis Bosch, who's our Wastewater Services Manager. We're here tonight to provide you with additional information and updates related to our private sewer lateral policy. We're going to explain a little bit of the warranty program information and public outreach plans that we have for sewer laterals. In June, the council provided direction to staff on three items related to sewer laterals. One was to pursue a modification to the current lateral policy. The second was to return to council with recommendations and plans for public outreach. And the third was to investigate a partnership with Sewer Lateral Warranty Company. A little bit of background, in June, we also met with the Infrastructure Subcommittee and shortly afterward with the full council where we discussed the rising costs and unsustainable nature of our current sewer lateral policy and practices. Staff provided a report at that time which presented several alternatives for council consideration to address rising costs and to better meet regulatory and baykeeper requirements. In addition, information was also provided, I said, about the warranty coverage for sewer laterals. Tonight, we'll provide a little bit more background related to laterals. Dennis is going to take that part of it and explain what we currently do with the laterals, how many there are and that sort of thing. We'll also provide you the update for the warranty program information. We investigated after the last meeting in June. And we'll also detail our public outreach efforts related to laterals and in particular the point-of-sale ordinance which was adopted by council in January and is set to take effect in May of 2015. And all those are related to sewer laterals. And I thought it would be good to briefly go over, we talk about laterals and cleanouts a lot, but I, we came up with this graphic and as we discussed previously, the current policy provides that if a cleanout has been installed, city staff will maintain what, what is called lower lateral, which is in the picture, or in the graphic, is considered that, that part of the lateral that's from the cleanout to the sewer main. In other words, the current practice is that once homeowners experience problems with their lateral, they can simply install a, an approved cleanout and then contact the city to repair or replace that lower portion of the lateral. This is where I hand it over to Dennis. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council. So, some facts around sewer laterals. There's approximately 11,000 citywide, so one pipe for mostly one property. Approximately 20 to 25% we believe of homes have a cleanout, so roughly 2,700, some form of a cleanout, whether it's been an installed one or one that's, was put in years ago or sometimes we call a T-connection, but some form of a cleanout. 119, or about 1%, are maintained by city staff at approximately $35,000 a year. And what I mean by maintained is through our CMMS system, we have set up a programmable preventative maintenance program where we go out and our staff cleans the lateral or mostly removes roots, three months, six months, and 12-month intervals. I say roots because that's what we can do. Sometimes when we go ahead and do a, a video, if it's a structural defect or if it's an offset, for the most part, it's going to cause a backup or already has. So therefore, once a cleanout, a specified cleanout meeting our city spec, we then take jurisdictional responsibility of that lower lateral as Jim has just alluded to, and then we make usually the repair. Most of those sewer laterals that we uncover, either it was old construction standards, it was a bell and spigot and then they slopped some mortar around it, a lot of that has For the ones that we can't maintenance, we're on course for about 60 to 70 repairs a year and it's projected to be almost around $500,000. In 2006, we started aggressively trying to fix them. It also was at the same time the WDR was ramping up in 2007, which said that we are responsible for SSOs from lower laterals, or at least the pipes that are considered part of our system. So we started ramping it up and our land item at that time was $30,000 for repairs and now we're up to 400 to 450,000. Per our, per consent decree with baykeepers, we need to reduce SSOs and have no more than three a year by 2019. Historically, approximately 90% of SSOs or sanitary sewer overflows are caused by laterals, whether it be a privately-owned lateral, a lateral with a cleanout, or just problems from them. Just to let you know, we're, we're around six SSOs that we're responsible for this year, so we're getting there. However, the reason why we're down so much on that is because we have so aggressively attacked, put money towards and repaired a high number of those lower laterals. On the next, on the next slide is our map and you can see, if you can't see, it's broken down into neighborhoods of where basically developments were, were constructed. In the red area says 1920s, other areas 1940s, and the yellow, and then so on. Most of the lateral repairs that we've done are east of Highway 280, which is in the, the more older part of town. However, we have done lateral repairs to west of 280 and just due to Orangeburg Pipe that was a material made after the war, a lot of that was installed in the 1950s and 1960s area. And through, through video inspection by our own crews, we've, we've found locations that are, that are starting to crush from that. And I'll give it back to Jim. So there's several factors that impact the costs and we've talked about several of those in prior meetings. One of the associated, one of the costs that's going to drive, or part of the driver for this graph is a point-of-sale ordinance. The point-of-sale ordinance, just as a reminder, is only for residential property built before 1960 and it was passed by the council in January, take effect in May 2015. It was required as part of the baykeeper consent decree and again, it was approved by council. And it will impact about 300 homes per year. What that will do for us under the current policy for sewer laterals is when people go to buy a home, they will be forced to, if it's built before 1960, to make sure that the sewer lateral is in, in good repair and get a certificate of, of inspection. Thank you. And when they find a problem, if they don't already have a cleanout, they can install a cleanout at, on their side of the property line and then call the city and ask for repairs to be done. What Dennis didn't tell you is we used to do about 10 to 15 repairs, lateral repairs a year, and that's gone up drastically. We're all, we've already done 60 this year and we're only halfway through the year. So, the costs have gone way up and we think that in part, people have found out about the, the policy and are taking advantage of it. And also, the age of the laterals, as Dennis mentioned, is contributing to, you know, it's just things wear out over time and it's kind of getting at a more rapid rate. When we add in the point-of-sale ordinance and the impacts from the point-of-sale ordinance, it's going to have a huge impact and we don't really know for sure the numbers, but we know it will have a big impact. We think about 20 to 25% of the homes that are sold will probably have some issues. How many of those people will call the city to get the repairs done? We don't know. They may work it out between the buyer and the seller to get it done with a contractor and not involve the city, we're not sure. I mentioned public outreach, we'll talk about that in a little bit. Also, in our report last time in June, we talked about the Sharp Park Lateral Grant Program and I have that in here just to explain that we, we do have a grant program for sewer lateral replacements in the city, but it's only for a specific area. Again, it's required as part of the baykeeper consent decree, obviously not available for citizens outside Sharp Park. We did contact baykeeper to find out, could we expand the program citywide? And we've asked for some interpretation on what we could do and, and so we made an effort and that was not approved. That program offers a 50% reimbursement up to $1,700. We have reached out to the Sharp Park area and I know that Vice Mayor Medina was at a meeting we had in I think May for the Sharp Park area. We went door-to-door, our crews went door-to-door to notify the folks there about the program and, and make a, an outreach to them. We've been mildly successful in the very short term, at least getting interest, but we've only had one lateral replaced since that meeting. We've had about six or seven that got their, their lines videotaped and we offer half of the, the cost for that up to $75. So, again, it wasn't, it wasn't as successful as we'd like for it to be.
Can you, can you mention roughly how much, do we know how much the repair costs were for those that did not, either did not, you know, take advantage of the program or maybe asked about the program and how many people asked about it? How much was the repairs? How much, yeah?
How much does it cost? Oh, so the average cost is anywhere between about $4,000 and $8,000.
Right.
If you, I sort of cringed when the beautification committee had all these pictures of these wonderful homes and I see this brickwork and I'm thinking, gosh, I hope their lateral's okay. Because those are the things that, that Dennis and I both think about when we see people that spend a lot of money on their property. We, we, we think, you know, I, I sure hope that they have a good, a good lateral. And in talking about good laterals, we, at the last meeting, we, we explained that we had reached out to a couple of warranty companies and so this slide here is, is the results of that. We've gone through and researched a company, this company is called Utility Service Partners that we've reached, that we've talked to about their, their program. We think their program's the best, it's the one that Daily City uses. It costs $9 a month, they cover up to $8,000 per occurrence. They have a 24-hour toll-free hotline, they actually, someone answers the phone, it's not a, you know, a recorded message. They have a 30-day waiting period and they would only market twice a year, spring and fall, and it would be materials that the city manager and, and others would, would have a say on. They don't mass market, they don't direct mail, they go through, they would go through the city to get that material approved beforehand. It's endorsed by the National League of Cities and they have a current partnership agreement with Daily City. And actually, one of our crew members got their letter with the city of Daily City's logo on it and, and a little three paragraph blurb about the program and a little tear-off thing that you could sign up for the program, you can pay a year in advance and so forth. The other thing that this company does is they partner with local contractors and they work out agreements on prices with local contractors. So you have local people working on, you know, the local issues. So the other part of the...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Just back on that, have you reached out to the city of Daily City to see and ask how they have found that service and how the residents feel?
I have and they've, they've expressed to me not only what they do for their policy because that was one of the key things, is what do they do with their current sewer lateral policy and how does it tie into this warranty program? But they have expressed that they're, the people that have obviously taken advantage of it are very happy with it. I know Dennis's mother has a program in South City and had the sewer line repaired. He didn't even know she had the program, but a considerable amount of work, the whole entire sewer line done and it turns out his mother's smarter than maybe he might be.
Extremely happy. She lives in South City and they have a different company, but a similar, similar program. And I received a call from my father and he said, "You have to do something." And my mother called me back and said, "Don't worry about it, I've been paying my $9 a month." And a local plumber came out, she called. They, they facilitated the plumber coming out and within a good amount, a fair amount of time, they had replaced and installed two cleanouts, one by the property one at the curb line. And for my mother's 120 per se dollars a year, I would probably say, I haven't seen the bill, but upwards, probably around $8,000. And that's from the, the house to the property line, not necessarily out from the property line to the street. So she's extremely happy.
So this company in particular has, they sort of break it up, they have $4,000 up until you get into the street, what they call "street cutting." If you need to do street cutting, then that, they, they give another $4,000. So, that's how they break up their cost piece. So, we're really happy with what they provided us. They provided us with samples of marketing materials and so forth. So at the, at the end of the presentation, we'll be asking for some direction regarding that. And again, we've committed to the council that we would provide public outreach, in particular for the point-of-sale back in January. We've formulated our plan based on, you know, during the summer's probably not a good time with all the activities. We've targeted fall and winter for some public outreach and we have planned to do more than one public informational meeting, meet with the realtors, meet here at the senior center and, and have cable TV televise the, the meeting so that we can play it, link to it from the website and so forth. We also are going to develop brochures and handouts so that we can have them at our points of customer contact, obviously to hand out at the meetings and also to have for our field staff. So when customers have questions about sewer laterals or point-of-sale or any of those things, we can have information right there. They're very knowledgeable anyway, but to have something to leave with that customer is important to us. And again, have that material on the website and, and involved on the cable TV as well. And in order to address regulatory requirements and increasing costs which have created unsustainable situations, staff recommends that council repeal the current Resolution 1986-64, 64. At the next council meeting, staff would be able to, if so directed, bring forward a resolution that would make homeowners responsible for the maintenance and repair of their laterals regardless of the cleanout status. In addition, staff recommends that any change to the current policy take effect no earlier than January 15th to allow for robust public information, education campaign as we've described. In addition, staff recommends that council direct staff to bring to council a resolution that would authorize the city manager to enter into a partnership agreement with Utility Service Partners which offers lateral warranty coverage. We're asking for city council's direction tonight on these items. This completes our presentation and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Rico?
Just really quick, before the council, when we talked about the information and the handouts, is any of that going to be bilingual or?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Okay, just wanted to check, was freshman.
Anything else while you have the mic? Ken, anything? Okay, Irene?
I appreciate all the work you've done and all the planning and I think you have captured the difficulties that we're looking forward, forward to and the fact that it's just very expensive. I was sitting here trying to do the math. If we had, if we charged the 11,000 people, how much it would cost per year to do the laterals? It comes out roughly $40,000 a resident, per each 11,000 persons, so, or 11,000 households. It's just not sustainable. We can't, we just cannot do it along with all the other capital improvements that we need to do. So, I for one, think you've done a very thorough job. I think it just has to be done. I don't know how else we could do it, so.
Thank you. We didn't cover it too much tonight. Dennis talked about the SSOs, but that's one of the concerns that we have is when there is an SSO with a lateral, we, it counts against the city. Another bit of information that sometimes people misunderstand and that is, even though there's 11,000 laterals, we currently only care for or maintain 1% of those laterals and that's 119 because they have root issues. Where we find breakages and they have a cleanout, a lot of times people will install that cleanout and call the city and Dennis has just been deluged recently. We then go and repair those, but that's a small number compared to the 11,000. But, that number will grow and grow and grow and that's the concern and that's why we're here.
I think the key word here is, is sustainability. We're not able to do that and I think times have changed and dictated that we're, I'm for appealing the resolution, so.
I, I did want to add too, we talked about Daily City a little bit and we mentioned this at the last meeting in, in June. Our practice will remain to provide top-notch service during work hours and after work hours. So if a citizen has an issue, whether or not they have a cleanout, whether or not they have a warranty program or whatever, we will roll a truck, help the citizen as best we can, which is what we do now. Oftentimes, a citizen doesn't have a cleanout and our crews respond, help that citizen, maybe talk to the plumber if the plumber was, others happened last Thursday, and help them locate where the main will be. We'll check the mains as well to make sure that's not an issue and we'll try to work through with the homeowner as best we can and then hand them off to the best resource possible. So, we're still going to provide that customer service. We owe that to our citizens.
Ken?
This, this is a major change and I understand because, you know, it's, it's an old community, it's an old infrastructure and I'm just curious, I mean, I don't believe that people are getting cleanouts to be able to take advantage of the city to repair their, their laterals. That's a policy that the building department set years ago, is that when you do a certain type of project, you got to put a cleanout. And they just, they did it. I'm curious as to, and let me just get this, I, I'm against point-of-sale, but I don't think that, that really is part of this. This is now taking all of the responsibility off of the city in replacing, replacing these laterals, no matter whether the house, property sells or not. I'm just curious as to where did it come about that the city was responsible from the property line to the main? I mean, it took us a long time to really get people, and, and a lot of people aren't even accepting the fact that it's their responsibility to, to fix their sidewalks. You know, all this stuff in the right of way is, they just feel that it's the city's responsibility. So how are we, I mean, is it, are we legally able to, you know, put that on the property owner? And, and I guess what I'd really like to know is where did we come off, where does the cities in the history come off saying that we're going to be taking care of these? You know, for, as far as people know, for perpetuity? And now, you know, now when we have deteriorating systems, and I, I fully understand that it's just going to grow and it's going to get, if, you know, someone's going to pay for new laterals, whether it's the city or the property owner. But, you know, where...
Wait, I can answer the legal question, which is, this appears to be a fairly longstanding policy of the city. A longstanding policy that benefited and currently benefits only a very few individuals now at a cost that far exceeds the original intention of the program. From a legal standpoint, some cities actually do say and have an ordinance that says the property owner is responsible for the entire lateral, from, from the house all the way to the main. The city of San Bruno could do that, they've chosen not to do that over the years. And while you're correct, this is a, would be, a potentially large change in policy, it was pointed out by the staff report, it's a large change for, for a very small number of individuals. And those individuals and others that are similarly situated can easily apply for and obtain warranty coverage which would protect them for most if not all of the anticipated cost. So for the 1% or 2% of the individuals who might have a very large cost that they want to avoid, they and others can purchase the warranty coverage that will protect them and, and others in the community.
And, and that's the thing, is that to be fiscally responsible here as we sit up here and try to cover these anticipated costs, it's going to be a lot more than nine bucks a month, you know? To do capital improvement projects, to be able to cover and to see that you're looking at half a million dollars to escalate it to a million and plus, you know, per year until every single sewer lateral is replaced, it's, I mean, we look at sidewalks and say we can't replace them all. You know, we look at streets and we say we can't, you know, we can't fix all the streets, we're, we're behind on that. So, it's, to me, it's just a matter of, you know, more, more outreach than anything to let, let the property owners know that it's just not, we're not capable of it.
One of the things that we found in doing the research and the background, especially for the June 24th, was what other cities are doing. And what we found was other cities who are under a consent decree have either changed this policy if they had one or are in the process of doing so because they have to. Because there doesn't seem to be a way or no one's figured out yet how to keep the SSOs under the prescribed number while at the same time providing that same level of service that they've had for who knows how many number of years. So, we, we did reach out, we did try to figure out what other folks are doing to try to address the issue and get all of that information to, to you folks to, to help, give us some direction.
Rico?
Thank you. I'm going to ask some questions, they can come back, they don't need all be answered, but I'm looking at the resources of staff time and costs. You listed some of those this evening, so if this goes forward and then that ownership becomes to the resident or the homeowner, then, you know, we're saving in some respects. How much is that? How much staff time? Are those resources being reallocated? Can they be deducted? Are we doing through attrition? I'd like to know and have that quantified. When stuff like this comes up, we're talking about cleanouts, kind of had it at the property line, was where the city would then maintain. So if we're going to bring it up to a resident and they're going to have to do it, our So if we're going to bring it up to a resident and they're going to have to do it, are we going to dictate to them that they have to have one at the property line? Because if we do a trenchless, you could be saving two to four thousand dollars by not having and requiring that one and just having it at the house. But again, it's their ownership. But I like to have that answered because I, I want to see where we're talking about as far as trying to make it simple, try to be reasonable with the type of materials. Are we going to be requiring people to only utilize certain services? If they go through the warranty, of course, that's already taken care of. Or are we just saying you're on your own? So if you want to find the, the best deal in town, which gives you one year warranty and it start, it's darn, you know, inexpensive, they go forward with it and it's not quality work, then we have potholes and we have other issues that arise. So I want to look at it on a broader base. I also worry about those individuals that may not have the economic means. So what happens if they're in a situation? Do we give them a timeline? Is somebody turning their water off? I mean, where is it at? I really think these, and that sounds really dramatic, but I think these are questions that people come up with and, and they, I think, would want to know. I know other cities offer some assistance, like South City in San Mateo. There's others that I think we can look to. I know there is a fee that has been collected. I don't know what that is in a year, maybe it's a hundred thirty-five thousand or something. Does that come off? Does that money get redirected for some assistance to those that may have a need? Maybe you can help twenty or thirty individuals that may be in low, low economic status. You know, I know that it has gotten too expensive for us to maintain, but obviously we've been collecting a fee that hasn't been raised to help offset those costs, which whether it's a fee or not, but, but we have been. So I think those are some of the immediate questions I have. And just as far as making it extremely simplistic to individuals, because sometimes when you haven't dealt with plumbing and you haven't dealt with stuff you can't see and you don't understand, you start talking about the bureaucracy at city hall and the requirements that we place on people and what's going to have to come out of their pocket. And I know you said eight thousand dollars, but really the way you later explained it on this service was four thousand dollars and potentially another four thousand dollars if it was the whole line. So obviously there could be out of pocket expenses depending upon specifics to their situation. So those are some of my immediate comments off the top of my head.
I'd be happy to take a shot at a couple of those questions. The one about staffing, one of the things that the consent decree required of, of the wastewater group was increased maintenance scheduling and, and a lot of the schedules that we had led to more staff time. So one of the things we'll be able to do if this shift was made, this change was made, is to put more effort into manhole inspections and a lot of the other things that we need to be doing and also CCTV, which is in our CIP. You'll see that as part of the CIP program to ramp up in that area where we need to be doing inspection, a lot of these older lines that have been inspected once and now we need to be followed up to help target some of the repairs. So our staff works incredibly hard and they do a good job, but one of the things that we need to do more of is some of those routine things that we aren't necessarily able to as we should because we're, we're tied up with a lateral response quite often. The one about the cost for the lateral program, one of the things we want to do, I mean, for the warranty program during the handout phase, we have some descriptive pictures of what a sewer line looks like, what roots look like, what cracked pipe looks like. So the, those of us who talk about it all day may know, but we want to provide some big poster board type things so that homeowners who may come to these informational meetings or as we televise them, we'll try to get it into the most common language we can and have handouts that have, that are very visual as well so that people can understand. And also in the meeting, the warranty company representative would be there at least at one or two of the meetings and have that discussion about what does it mean, four thousand dollars? We talked to him at length and said, what does that normally cover? And he said ninety-five percent of the repairs are covered within that four and four. If you get maybe some of the pictures we saw with the really fancy rock walls and, you know, you may get into a different situation there with stamped and stained concrete, you know, all those kinds of things that may need to be replaced if it, the repairs of a certain type. So, but that's kind of a rare occurrence from what the, the provider explained to us, so.
Mr. Peterson?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff. I live on Seneca Court and I sent you a letter today and it might not have got to you yet since I delivered it to City Clerk, but only this afternoon, but I'm here to ask you not to change the current repair procedure. And I would call into question the staff analysis on this. I think there's some oversimplifications in it. One thing I hadn't thought to comment on was the warranty program. When there's a warranty program, there's also the warranty rake off. You never see that money. They don't do these warranty programs for their health. They do it because it makes money for them. So a certain amount of every warranty bill disappears. Basically, I'm, I'm recommending the city keep the current system of city repair to sewer laterals and streets and easements. And this is because they have the equipment, they have the people, they have the materials, they have the experience. All they have to do is apply it and I see them out there, I know they can do the work. Since nineteen eighty-six, property owners have paid sixty cents per month per property for this rule that you're talking about junking that I'm suggesting you hang on to. That's over two hundred dollars per owner since nineteen eighty-six and two point mil, two point two million total. I wonder where that two point two million is now. The city has collected this money and it's not reasonable to summarily drop this service. The city should simply mark the service to market and continue it. And I challenge the idea that it would be a ridiculously huge cost. Any of you who have ever bought insurance wouldn't expect to have insurance that you paid for thirty years on to be dropped summarily and told you couldn't get it anymore. I'm saying that's what this recommendation is and that you're considering. Thus far, many owners have benefited from this city's service and it would be unreasonable benefit to those owners if it were dropped now because other owners wouldn't be able to get the service that they've been paying for since nineteen eighty-six. The city suggests that each owner contract with a separate insurance service instead of continuing the city's role as it is now. This is ridiculously cost ineffective to owners, particularly versus the city doing the work. And the city doesn't do the work now anyway. They have a private contractor, they call them up and the private contractor goes out there. I've, I've watched the private contractor, they're incredibly professional. The last two repairs I saw were over, oversupplied with equipment and people, but at the same time they did a fabulous job. Where was, why wasn't the city staff doing that? You have all this equipment, well, let's not get lost in that. But you do have, in some cases, places where these laterals are going to break in the street. I don't think it's anywhere near a huge number going to break in the next year or the next two years. Many laterals that have gone on for years functioning will continue to go on for years and function fine. Any home, and any homeowner who wants now to pay for this work in city streets and on city right of way may proceed to do that now or later. The, the citizens aren't restricted. And in some cases, they're doing that because they don't know about this magic solution where you put in a, a cleanout and then the city becomes responsible for the pipes in the street. These costs should remain with the city. The city should create a budget to meet these costs and the city is the appropriate party for the repairs. I'm a citizen who objects to the proposed plan, common sense, advocates maintaining current procedure, which has been in place and working since nineteen eighty-six, about twenty-eight years. And please ask me any questions you want. I know more than a little bit about sewers. And I've done more than a little bit of sewer replacement and lateral replacement.
Okay, I, I'm going to get some clarification from staff on a couple of your comments, but I want to hear, you want to speak?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evening, Council. I'm Jim Evangelist, I live on one oh five DeSoto Way. And I just wanted, first I'd like to get a little clarification on the point of sale that was recently implemented by the council based on Bakers' mandate. Is that only for Orangeburg that that repair has to be in or any? I, I believe that's the way it read when I was looking at the briefing sent to council. It was only if the house had Orangeburg would there be a necessary replacement if it was crushed? If that's the case, having worked in the sewer department for eleven years, there's less than one percent of the houses in San Bruno have Orangeburg. So even though three hundred houses a year may be sold in San Bruno, they're not all going to have to go through that rigorous situation. So now I would like to just address some of the questions that I think you should ask based on the briefing that you read. Why wasn't the household fee modified during the past eight years when this crisis about the sewers has been fomenting? This is reminiscent of the crisis you guys had to deal with when all of a sudden the state said you're getting fined two hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This crisis has been brewing and apparently management hasn't been dealing with it. They've just let this simmer. Now they're presenting to you almost unworkable situation. And certainly you're going to go to the default easiest way to go, that's what they're hoping, and that is let's just get rid of this responsibility. If you read the, the resolution that we have, nineteen eighty-six resolution, sixty cents a month was for expanded services. It didn't take ownership of the, of the lateral, although they were still reporting SSOs out of it. That's a legal issue, I have no idea which was right or wrong. So also I would like to say if they increased to two dollars per month per household, that would generate over a quarter of a million dollars annually to work on laterals. And once you repair a lateral, ideally, you're not going to have to, it's not going to be continued maintenance or have to go back and repair it again if it's done properly. And I, I, I understand that we have to keep those SSOs down. I'm for that as much as anybody else here is. But I think that, I've lost my train of thought, sorry. I think that if you're going to make this decision based on that criteria, that you're, you're going to help the city get out from underneath these, then I, I suggest that you reevaluate the number of staff because I know there are two people at least dedicated to lateral maintenance. I did it myself for two years. And that should be reevaluated. The money could be diverted into CIP projects. So there is ways of make, paying back the residents for putting them in the position of now taking the responsibility of their entire lateral. I think that this is a unique plan, I agree. It's manageable if it's run really well. If the crews are, instead of outsourcing the repairs, which has accelerated the costs, we used to do all the lateral repairs virtually and then for the last four years, I believe that's all been outsourced. So naturally, not only the people that we used to pay with our, with salaries that used to do the lateral repairs, we're not utilizing in that situation, they're being, all that work is being outsourced to a private company. So naturally the costs will accelerate. And I was, I'm just wondering also why it's taken so long for management to respond to the lateral SSO crisis. They really didn't start to do really a lot of in-house repairs until about two thousand and ten. And since then, it's really been a lot more repairs on the laterals, but it's been done by outside contractors. So those kind of questions I think has, have to be asked of the department itself. And, and then maybe you better understand why we're in the situation we are right now. That I, I believe should have been able to be under control. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Couple of questions for staff or comments. I mean, Mr. Peterson said sixty cents times all of these years is two point two million dollars, but I understand from the staff report that just this year alone projected to spend five hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, we're way, way behind on, on the sixty cents. It's not even going to come close to anything. Maybe you can clarify the point of sale regarding Orangeburg versus other types of pipes?
So as I understand it, that does, that is a requirement, the consent decree that talks about specifically about Orangeburg and the dates. I believe it's nineteen forty to nineteen sixty, I'm going off memory. The council decided to expand that and include all homes built before nineteen sixty and not try to delineate which ones had Orangeburg and which ones didn't.
Question, I don't know how to answer this. Why was the fee not modified, this sixty cents? Why wasn't it increased? And I mean, I wouldn't even know, what would you increase it to?
Yeah, we have not done a calculation to determine how, what would need to be added to the existing wastewater rates. And I'm sorry to say that none of your staff here has a good understanding about why that fee wasn't raised at some point in the past. What I can tell you is that the way that the wastewater rates are set and in particular consistent with Proposition two eighteen, which is a much more recent phenomena, obviously, than nineteen eighty-six, is that the total cost of all aspects of the capital and the operating program, including work that we do to maintain sewer laterals, but including everything else, is captured and evaluated and then considered as part of the, in total, what the rate needs to be in order to cover those costs. So the, the rate of the sixty cents per month, whether that is, you know, how that got started or what is its utility, it is certainly not sufficient to make a dent in the annual cost that the city is expending in the, in the current time period for its services under this program. There is no line item in the rate structure that calls out that amount. So how, how that got established or what the cost would be, other than I can tell you it would be substantially more than that if it was factored into a monthly charge.
Okay, then it was brought up about the use of outside contractors. They, the city just, I mean, I understand that regardless of whether the city does it or outside contractors still have to be paid, but maybe you can comment on that, on the use of them.
So one of the things that in looking at the SSO numbers, there used to be in the thirties and forties in SSOs and while crews did do some repairs that are now done by contractors, when, at least in my estimation, when crews did that, they weren't able to do the frequent maintenance type activities. And when, once we made that switch to an outside contractor that could target those individual repairs, that allowed our crews to focus on the, more of the maintenance activities instead of repair. And those maintenance activities are the things that prevent SSOs and the SSS, SSO numbers dropped off significantly down to we have six this year. That is a direct result of the decision to utilize outside resources to do the bigger work, you might say. We have one dump truck, it's a small dump truck, we have one backhoe. We just do not have the resources that a contractor can bring to bear on some of these more complicated or deep digs, so to speak. We would tie up our whole entire crew. We're better, the city is better served by spreading our resources out to do those maintenance type activities. We will do the same thing and make some significant gains on some of those issues like manhole inspections and others if this policy is changed. So we, we're stretched kind of thin now to do what we need to do. But with the CMMS system and with some, some targeted maintenance, we're doing some good things. So, and the contractor is as well.
Okay. Rico?
On that point, if my memory is correct, SSOs were going down prior to CMMS because of staff and the diligence of the crew, before all this outsourcing and all of that. So I also want to be fair to those that have been in the field in that, because I would ask the question periodically when we have study sessions, and it was like, wow, they were going down. And I'm sure if I asked staff to produce data, we would see that.
Sure.
So I want to be fair too, because in essence, we are taking that staff, like you said, be directing them for other avenues, taking on the contract, contract outsourcing, because obviously you were trying to do a balance. And so we have increased a lot of overhead
Sure.
to the line item for outside services.
And I think there's a lot of factors that go into that. You know, some of the CIP projects that have gone in, some of the pump station repairs and upgrades that have happened, some of the improvements that, that Dennis's crew has made out in the field has improved and reduced some SSOs. So there's a lot of things, and you're correct, there's a lot of things go into that.
Want to add a comment again?
I just want to make sure we answered all of your questions or addressed them anyway.
Well, we have reduced the SSO.
Right, close to the mic there.
We have reduced the SSO dramatically. And a great deal of that was done when you, the City Council allocated emergency hotspot and emergency repairs. When those were done, and that took a couple of years, a trinet construction firm came in there, that started the SSO count to dwindle. And once they left, there has to be a point at some time, at some point where after all the chronic, and these were chronic sites, the repeated SSOs were finally fixed, we don't have the SSOs out of there any longer. For instance, we're going to be redoing Trenton soon, Trenton Outfall. Many SSOs over the years happened there. We finally fixed a 20-foot section in about 2010. We haven't had an SSO out of there yet since then. So that's one of the really reasons why that the count of SSOs has gone down. And anybody who manages a sewer system knows that that would have happened. That's what it takes to stop the SSOs, is repair the troubled spots. That's why the CCTV is done. We've had that done by an outside contractor in the past. I don't know if any of the tapes were reviewed, but there certainly wasn't any reaction in terms of a proactive solution or repairs of spots until just recently. So that's part of the reason the SSOs are down.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from Council? Questions? Let's make it quick because we've got a lot of quick comments.
I only got the agenda Friday, so I didn't have a lot of time to prepare. If you would like to see a petition with 500 signatures on it, that you should maintain the current policy and not change it, I can do that. It's not, everybody I've talked to thinks it's nuts to change the approach. Just recognize that you need to make a financial plan for it. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right. Direction to staff? Ken?
You know, judging from what Mr. Peterson says and judging from what you've heard of, you know, why didn't we do this? Why didn't we do that? Okay, past history. What is the other option? How much would we have to raise? How much would we have to go from 60 cents up? I know we don't know, but we'd have to come up with something. And if that's, if that's what the, if this board wants to, you know, take on, or if that's what the, you know, the residents would prefer, fine. But I mean, at 60 cents a month, it's not going to happen. So what should it be? You know, are we going to get into increasing our CIP to take on something that people feel that it's our responsibility?
So 60 cents is, is kind of an irrelevant feature of a historical resolution. It has no relevance to the cost of delivering the program or what the cost, and this is our primary concern, is the escalation of costs in trending as we see those costs and that activity level trending. So we could certainly make some projections for you, but currently, costs are being covered by the wastewater rates. We would anticipate that wastewater rates would need to be raised as the escalation of activity increases, as we're, as, as activity levels increase, as we're projecting. We could try and do some projections on that, but the 60 cents is really irrelevant to the cost of delivering the service.
Yeah, and I realize that, and it, yeah, it's just a, it's, I, I think that's the thing, is that if we, if, as, as a department, as, you know, as a City Council, just like the mains, just like the pump stations, just like, you know, all the other infrastructure, maybe we need to, you know, put something out there as to, this is what it's going to take. We've got the data. We know, we anticipate our projections as to how many over the next 10, 20 years, you know, are going to start failing. And, you know, we have the data as to what, what we're not keeping up with right now. I think that's, you know, that's the argument, whether we're going to go in that direction or not, but I think that's the argument we need to communicate, you know, to the, to the community that, you know, it's, we'll, you know, if we do, if you do want us to keep, you know, keep the program, this is what we have to, you know, to, to do to change it.
I think, the other comment I want to make, and I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, is, I mean, suppose that number were $8 a month or something. You can get insurance, apparently, for $9 a month. It's going to cover pretty much what you have to do. And it is, in fact, very, very cheap insurance. I, early this year, just had to replace my lateral, and with it, I put in a cleanout. So the city comes by, I'm one of the guys that, that's on the list, and they can buy, I think it's every six months, and take a look and stuff. And so hopefully, down the road, I don't have to dig up a sidewalk and a retaining wall on the street and everything else at my expense. I'd be one of the first to sign up for it. But I know what you're speaking about, and I had to do it, you know, and it was a nice piece of change. So I'm just speaking from experience. But I can look at it another way, too. I mean, the citizens of San Bruno have been very fortunate to have had this service for many, many years. Not comparing us to other cities, but other cities have said, hey, it cheers all the way out, all the way from the house, all the way out into the main, for many years. And people tell me, you have what? The city covers that? Yeah. So I think it's something we've had for a long time, and, and like I said, I'm one of those that just had to do it this year and put it to cleanout, but I'm still in favor of having the, having the homeowner pick it up because it's unsustainable, unsustainable. We can talk all we want, but the more we talk, the longer, you know, these things get aged. So it's going to be an ongoing problem because for the most part, we have an old community. That's just my feeling.
That's one of the reasons why it was important to us as we went through the research to give the Council and citizens an option so that we weren't advocating to change the policy and then say, that's it. We want, that's why we researched the warranty companies, and that's, we wanted to provide them an outlet, a way of self-help, and $9 a month could get citizens to that point. And in, under your direction, one of the things that we think is really important is that public outreach, that we're not just going to have sort of a short-term outreach in that regard. It would be an ongoing thing because we want people to, to make it available to their own homes so they don't have to pay those increased costs if they do have a problem and they do have a 24-hour service and they get in that bind, because we get the phone calls, but they'll be able to rely on someone to get there and get it repaired, so.
One thing I'd like to add, under the warranty program, right now, we could go out to a house, and let's say they have a cleanout, but the blockage isn't in the lower lateral, it's in the upper lateral. So with just explaining, and I think offhand, a plumber just to respond to your house could be maybe at a $75, $95, and then if they do a video, I think I've seen $150. So in a sense, if they were to go with the warranty program, not only are they covered from the lower lateral, but they're given the, they're given the protection of the upper lateral that we can do nothing for them at this point. So there is that, there is that benefit. And, and we researched it extensively as part of the, and we could give more information later, but as part of the warranty program, they also offer other things like, you know, if you want to insure the piping in your house, because now my mother's going to insure everything, because she sees, she sees the, the value in it. And, and I understand a dollar's a dollar, and, and, and it's tough to make that dollar sometimes, but if someone were to have that, when we were to go out there and if the blockage isn't in the lower lateral, they would be able to be covered for that upper lateral. So that's, that's a benefit to them, and they're going to get that service, for the most part, from a cost-benefit analysis, either at or cheaper than what it would have been to just call out a plumber to, to relieve that problem.
Direction for the rest of the Council? Rico?
The only thing I was saying is, is options. When we say it's not sustainable, that's because of the 60 cents, which the manager's correct, that's just a number that, that doesn't work, obviously. So what would that number be? I think that's the question that maybe even Councilman Bear was asking, because I think you're trying to show the public options. We're seeing 25% of it currently, 25% of the 11,000 currently have it. So if there's the option of those go up in order to make it sustainable, is that an option? And what is that? Because obviously, we're offering, what we're trying to say is, the city can only do this much, we're going to offer you a private service that can do this much, and you can get inter, interior, thank you, and external coverage. But at the same time, too, I think we need to, some of the questions that have been raised, I think they deserve answers. I think it, it's our responsibility to have answers. And if we don't know what that cost is, a person can look to us and say, well, that's great for you because you're not paying the $9 a month. I am. So what does it cost you? We're talking about whether it's the contractors or this or that. I, I just think before some resolution comes before the Council, the questions that were raised need to be addressed, need to have answer and have options. And I think then if you present it to the public and if they want to sign a petition or if they say, you know what, honestly, I'd rather go with the private service because I'm going to get more bang for my buck, I think that's something that you present to people and let they make the decision. And when they're well informed, I think it gives them opportunity to make those decisions.
All right.
Thank you. I appreciate what you said, and I, I think we could, the staff could probably come back with a number. So just to make, make sure I have the scenario right. Right now, if you have a blockage in your lateral that's close to your house, you don't have a cleanout, it's close to your house, you're responsible for it.
Property work owner is responsible.
Property owner's responsible for it. Okay. That can take up too, and I had mine done, but it was maybe 10 or 15 years ago, so that was $5,000. There was no recourse, there was no insurance, there was nothing. I had to pay the whole bill. It now has a cleanout, but it's only two feet from the main. So I still have responsibility from the cleanout all the way to my house, and my sewer line runs to the back of my house, so it's a long run. Okay. So what we're offering now and encouraging people to think about is an insurance policy that covers from the house all the way down to the street, and it costs $9 a month. If we took the increased half a million dollar cost of the lateral fixings that we do now and project even more in the future, can, can I, and my math is really bad, I was looking at my other thing and it's just wrong, how much per month, per resident, is that going to cost? That's basically, that's the, that's the question, because if each of us pay $9 a month, everybody in the city, and that is, that covers the cost, is that what we're willing to do instead of the 25% if they paid the $9 a month and the rest of us don't have to? So that's the question. It's, am I making myself clear? The, so, so if, if, if the city, the whole, the city as a whole bears the cost of doing the laterals, and we don't rescind the order and we say, okay, we're going to, we're going to take care of this, we're all going to pay for this, how much a month is that? It's 11,000 residents or 11,000 water sewer bills, X amount per month. Are we all willing to pay that per month so that 25% of the people don't pay $9 a month? I guess is the question. I, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to get people to understand that it's either 100% paying X amount or it's whoever chooses to pay the $9 a month for this, the insurance, which covers more than the city would cover anyway. Does that make sense?
I mean, you're right as far as the coverage, and I mean, as far as the home warranty or warranty, I can get that now. I don't have to wait for this.
Well, exactly.
We've all had that option. So I've already been paying, City of San Bruno, I know I don't have the personal one, but I mean, I could, and with the waiting period, of course, and I can use this, I could use somebody else. We're just saying we've done some homework on this. We're not advocating, I believe, that that's the only option that the residents of this community have. And you're right, we do make some choices. So if I don't want to have a cleanout at my house and there's a clog, then they're going to have to pull and reset the toilet, and that's going to be very expensive. So there are choices. Now, that still wouldn't cover with this warranty, but again, we're bringing forward some options. So I think when you place it before people, they can see the variables that are, you know, it's hard to single people out, like you said, okay, well, you pay, but you don't. But I think at the same time, if the question is being asked, how much is it going to cost to make it sustainable? And we don't know. I think people deserve that information.
I'm not saying they don't deserve it. I'm, I'm trying to frame it to explain how it would come out. So, so, because, because eventually, it's us who's going to have to make the choice, a part of the choice, and not, not just the person, no matter how much information we put out there.
And let's be honest with each other, we just had a water sewer rate not too long ago, that was a close vote. But at the same time, if some people are looking at this going, well, wait a minute, if you're telling me I'm going to spend $9 more a month on my water sewer bill, I'm not okay with that. There are people that are okay today. That's why I voted no. But at the same time, we do have the other burden of having to provide the service and make sure that the system works. So I think that's what would help enlighten folks to what the options and what the reality of what we're talking about.
Yes, and that's what I'm saying. So there you go.
If you want to, if you want to speak, address us, Sandy.
It just, from listening to you guys, it just sounds like to me that there's companies out there are being way more efficient than what we're being in. I, you know, as my, San Bruno, the people of San Bruno, I hate to see anybody not be here working. I'd love to see more people working here, but it just sounds to me like that if some other company can come here and protect all of our sewer laterals for $9 a month each, but it's going to cost them 500, our city $500,000 to keep up on this 25% of these that they got to replace, and over the years, it's going to continue to grow and grow, something just doesn't sound right here to me, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the point I was trying to make.
Okay, so I told staff how I felt about it. Ken?
I need more information. I think whether we have a study session or something and just get both sides out there, I think I could make a better decision. I am very concerned about, you know, maintaining the system and, and, you know, reaching that no more than, you know, the single-digit SSOs, because then we're going to pay more. We're going to get hit again. But it's, I don't, I don't want to say that we're not prepared to pay for this, but we, you know, we haven't budgeted for it, and that's what we're supposed to do. If that's a service that we're supposed to, you know, provide to our residents, then we have to let them know that this is how much it costs. And I think we're giving it away, and we've been giving it away. So if that's the policy we want, if this Council wants to vote...
So if that's the policy we want, if this council wants to vote to keep giving it away, that's one thing. But if we, if we're going to keep it or going to pass it on to, you know, to outside, then I think we need to hear all sides.
Rico?
I've made my comments, and I also think whether it's a study session, I think it would be value, of value with coming back with some of the questions that have been asked by council as well and community.
Irene?
Do you want me to say more?
I don't know if we've given you firm enough direction. It sounds like we want some more information on a, on a study session, although tonight was kind of a study session, but, yeah, I think, let's go ahead and get that done so we're all on the same page. Okay? Anything else? All right.